I call the May 16th, 2017 Riverton City Council Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:46 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion on the consideration of claims.
Ma'am, consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $367,000, 167,000, 21 cents for payroll liabilities for 4/28/17, and the amount of $424,761.18 in the manual checks and the amount of $15.45 for a total of $791,946.84.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions or discussions about the bills? Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Then do we have anything else that you'd like to add?
Kyle. Madam Chairman.
Yes.
My question is to Kyle. On this, uh, $87,391.31 to our Riverton Airlines, is that an accumulation or what? That normally is about $32,000.
Madam Chairwoman, Councilman Larson, that will encompass a couple weeks payment. Manual checks, and you'll forgive me, I don't have it right in front of me, but add that, that would represent most likely two weeks worth of payment for the minimum revenue.
You're saying two weeks, you mean two months?
Madam Chairwoman, Councilman, can you please tell me which page you're looking at and then I can look at it?
I'm looking at the front page.
Okay, thank you.
He'll need to, we have an addition, Kyle.
It's not there for your view yet. There you go.
Oh, I see.
Additional claim, it's under additional claims.
Yeah, for the $87,000?
Correct.
Thank you. So, Madam Chairwoman, Councilman Larson, we've been averaging around $40,000 on our weekly payments. So depending on those totals, and I'd be happy to go check those, that could represent two to three weeks on that. Our lowest payment thus far per week on the minimum revenue guarantee has been around $20,000. Our highest has been a little over $40,000. And so when we look at a total of $87,000, that could represent two to three weeks worth of payment for the minimum revenue guarantee.
Has our, has our boarding dropped that much or?
Madam Chairwoman, Councilman Larson, our boardings haven't necessarily dropped, but we're coming out of a slow season for travel. Our bookings are increasing, but our bookings are for those summer months when people are traveling. And so right now, we're pulling out of the low travel season, and that probably represents what you're referencing there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Then meeting adjourned at 6:50.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity to be on the council and to serve Riverton. Thankful for all the blessings that we have. Thankful for the citizens that strive to make this place a better place. Thankful for the support for the police force that we honor for their sacrifices. We are thankful for all the blessings that we have, and we say this humbly, "Name thy Son, Jesus Christ." Amen.
The Chair, let's see, would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Tim Hancock.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. I would entertain a motion to excuse Lance Godey and Mike Bailey from tonight's meeting.
I'd move to excuse Councilman Bailey and Councilman Godey from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I declare that we do have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Excuse me, just a minute. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of the consent agenda item proposed 2017-18 Wind River Visitors Council Budget Plan to be discussed after item nine and the clarification that Resolution 1355 is community development fee increase and Resolution 1356 is establishing temporary merchant fees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion about those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Communications from the floor. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Mayor Baker in council, my name is Jonathan Schmidt. I'm with the American Cancer Society. And I've actually been speaking with Kristin Watson for a number of years about Relay for Life and the American Cancer Society. This morning, I was in Gillette, Wyoming. Round 11, I was in Sheridan, and I am now here this evening, and tomorrow I'll be in Rock Springs. And it's given me a unique opportunity to be able to see Wyoming and to be very impressed with Wyoming's commitment to continue the work to fight cancer. One of the reasons I'm here to speak with you this evening is to talk with you a little bit more about who we are and why it's important for Riverton. The American Cancer Society was founded in 1913, and it was founded by 15 businessmen and physicians. And their original goal was to kind of, not kind of, it was to bring cancer out of the closet. It was something that was hidden. And since that time, it's been American Cancer Society's primary mission to keep cancer at the forefront of, whether it be the public sector, whether it be education, whether it be in the halls of government, to keep it in the forefront of everyone's mind that, you know, cancer never sleeps nor should we. And that's the reason why Relay for Life was started back in 1985 by Gordy Klatt. He was a physician out of Tacoma, Washington, and he wanted to do something more in terms of fighting cancer. He had just lost a patient to cancer and wanted to take some active steps. And so in that first year in 1985, he decided that he was going to run all night or for 24 hours. And then he was going to have his friends join him at different legs of his running, and they paid $25 to do that. And by the end of 24 hours, he had run 83 miles and raised $27,000. Since that time, Relay for Life was, was formed and has become a worldwide movement. It's the largest fundraising movement in the world. It has raised over $5 billion for cancer research. Currently, the American Cancer Society is second only to the federal government in granting research funds. And so research is something that we take very seriously. It's something that I think should continue to be at the forefront of everyone's mind. This year in 2017, there will be an estimated 2,760 people who will be diagnosed with cancer here in Wyoming. 960 will die from cancer this year in Wyoming. And so obviously, we have a lot of work that we need to do. And so one of the things that I'm asking the council and, and the mayor is, we're always looking in every community for champions to speak on behalf of the American Cancer Society. American Cancer Society, because it's a national organization, even an international organization, can often be seen as this large corporation that's making, taking money away from Wyoming. This past year, $792,000 was granted to Dr. Levy at the University of Wyoming where he is studying the nucleus. And also another $294,000 was granted to patients in lodging stays in various cities around where people were having to be treated for cancer. So just in those two things alone, over a million dollars came back into the state of Wyoming. Last year, Wyoming raised just a little over $500,000. And so it was over $500,000 that came back into the state of Wyoming. And that was only through two programs. There's other programs as well, and that's, that's another reason why I'm here. Because a lot of times, people don't know where to turn when they've been diagnosed with cancer. It's one of the hardest things that anyone will hear. Even in December, I had a scare with colon cancer. And, you know, I go in for just a routine checkup, and the next thing I know, the nurse is asking me a whole lot of other questions that I wasn't anticipating because something came back from one of my, my blood, some of my blood work. And at one point, they go, "We have to rule out cancer." And so I can, at that moment, all the thoughts that went through my head, I can't imagine what it is when somebody actually hears the words, "You have cancer." And so it's one of the hardest things that people hear, and it's our firm belief that as hard as it is to hear, "You have cancer," it shouldn't be hard for them to find help. And that's the reason why you have the cards in front of you and also where to turn when you're diagnosed with cancer. On there, there's two programs, cancer.org, and a lot of people say, "Okay, it's a website." Well, on cancer.org, just as an example, if you were to type in Gleevac, which is one of the, which was one of the drugs that was developed through research for the, through the American Cancer Society's funding, you will see what Gleevac is used for, a drug that's being used for Sarah Miller in Casper, Wyoming, that has lengthened her life from a cancer that used to be a death sentence. So you can go on there, you can find out about your diagnosis, you can find out all kinds of information. The 1-800 number, and the 1-800 number is actually staffed by human beings. You're not going to have to go through a tree saying, you know, "Type 1, type 2," or, you know, whatever it is. You'll actually reach a human being, and a lot of times, they are highly trained, and some of them are even oncology nurses. And you can reach them 24/7, and I've heard stories across Wyoming where people have awoken at 2:00 in the morning after being diagnosed with cancer, and they call the 1-800 number to be able to just get some counsel and to have somebody be able to hear their fears and their concerns. And more importantly, I don't know if more importantly, but a very important aspect of the 1-800 number is it can also connect people up to clinical trials. And the clinical trials, I have seen over and over again, when doctors have said, "There's nothing more that we can do," they have been connected with clinical trials, and then 20 years later, I'm standing there talking with the survivor who went through a clinical trial. And so there's some amazing resources, you know, I, I call those the two portals into a vast database of resources that cancer patients, when they're diagnosed, they do not have the time or the resources often to be able to find out that information. And so, you know, those are two things that, you know, I'd really ask City of Riverton to consider is to continue to get the word out about the resources that are available to people. Help people to know that the American Cancer Society is, is here to really help the people in Riverton, DuBois, Lander, all of Fremont County. And then finally, I'll leave you with this. We know that 50% of cancer can be prevented through healthier lifestyles, both through nutrition, avoiding tobacco, reducing alcohol, and getting screenings when they should. Wyoming right now ranks as one of the, ranks the lowest in colon, colon screenings. Both my dad and my father-in-law died from colon cancer. And yet, colon cancer is one of the easier forms of cancer to cure. And I would love to see those statistics change in the state of Wyoming. And there's a lot of reasons why it's low, the remote nature of, of where some people live, the difficulty to get to treatment and stuff. But I do think that more of an encouragement in, in whatever ways we can, 50% is no small number of being able to prevent cancer. And so, thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and yes, and we have a Relay for Life event coming.
Oh, yes, and thank you for that.
Okay, we'll plug that.
So Relay for Life is taking place June 3rd, and it will be at the Riverton High School track. And for those of you who have never been to a Relay for Life event, there's a whole lot of teams. We have about, we have 24 teams that are signed up. The school has showed up in a big way. We have several schools that are participating. And it's a, it's a great opportunity to come out, support the community. It recognizes all cancers, excuse me. And, and it's a, it's a great way to fundraise, and we try to make it a very community, family-friendly event. So I hope, I hope to see some of you out there, and that, that's June 3rd. It will start at 4 o'clock for a Survivor Dinner where we recognize the survivors and honor them, and it'll go until midnight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder.
Good.
All right.
Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, May 2nd, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 2nd, 2017, executive session meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 9th, 2017, special meeting work session. Approval of the minutes, May 6th, 2017, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for May 16th, 2017. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of April, 2017. Approval of the Open Container Permit Application for Dee Shackley on July 29th, 2017, for an 80th birthday party at Sunset Park from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Approval of ordinance number 17-005 on second reading. Proposed ordinance number 17-005, an ordinance amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare. Chapters 9.04, offenses by or against public officers in government, and 9.08, offenses against public peace and decency. Repealing sections 9.04.050, harass or interfere with any dog used by the Police Department. 9.08.050, unlawful to assemble. 9.05.060, unlawful to collecting crowds. 9.08.120, secret stalls, etc., prohibited in certain establishments. 9.08.170, solicitation of fornication, adultery or illicit in course of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Approval of ordinance number 17-006 on second reading, an ordinance amending Title 17, zoning. Revising Chapter 17.32, R2 Residential District, Section 17.32.010A, uses, and 17.32.020B and C of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed ordinance number 17-007 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 17, zoning, to revise Chapter 17.12, zoning districts designated, 17.16, general requirements. 17.36, RA Residential District. 17.80, MHP Mobile Home Park District of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed ordinance number 17-004 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, revising Chapter 5.04, alcoholic beverages. Section 5.04.010, definitions of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for an effective date. Proposed ordinance number 17-009 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, revising Chapter 5.04, alcoholic beverages. Section 5.04.020, sales establishments generally. 5.04.050, hours of sale. 5.04.110A, A2, and B, drive-in area requirements. 5.04.140A1, application generally of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed ordinance number 17-010, an ordinance amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, revising Chapter 5.04, alcoholic beverages. Section 5.04.030C, sale, etc., to or by persons under the age of 21 years, at the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed ordinance number 17-00011 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, revising Chapter 5.04, alcoholic beverages. Section 5.04.170, issuance or denial. 5.04.210B, term, transfer, etc., at the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. And proposed ordinance number 17-012 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, revising Chapter 5.04, alcoholic beverages. Section 5.04.180, restrictions on issuance of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Wow.
That was a mouthful.
That was pretty good, Kristin. I tracked you word for word. You did all right. Hey, are there any other items that are up for discussion?
Sadly, yeah, but I don't want to go after that. I only have two sentences, I promise.
Okay.
And I can't mess these ones up because that was amazing. Yeah, ready?
Ready.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for bills to be paid in the amount of $367,170.21. Payroll liabilities for 4/28/17 in the amount of $424,761.18 in manual checks and the amount of $15.45 for a total of $791,946.84.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item of business is interim police chief's report. Introduction of new police officer.
Your Honor, if I may, it is my pleasure to introduce a new police officer. We've hired Casey Tadwalt. Casey's here with his family. Casey was a sheriff's deputy or a detention officer for five years. He has five kids. He's married, and he grew up in Lusk, Wyoming, so he is a, a local boy of sorts. He's been with us about six weeks. He's in his second phase of training and is doing very well. So we'd like to get him his oath of office sworn in tonight, if you would please, and get him on his way to a great career with the Riverton Police Department.
Good. So you're gonna have me do the swearing in?
Yes, sir. That's okay. That's okay.
Yes. Kind of looks like yours.
So you've got yours, you can read off of that, Casey. So raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment.
Related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
That I will discharge my duty, the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Cool. Thank you. Pretend.
Turn around, girls.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
That's cool. Great. There you go. What's your pin?
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the one that we took off of consent, the Wind River Visitors Council Proposed Budget. And I would like to just table that until our next meeting. They don't have a meeting, the Wind River Visitors Council, this is a tentative budget. Their, their council meeting is next week, okay? And so then, a week from now, or two weeks from now, we'll have their budget to actually vote on, okay?
Yes, sir.
So.
Let's table. Do we need a motion?
We do.
I move we table it.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion has been tabled until June the 6th, is it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Public hearing and consideration of Resolution 1356, establishing temporary merchant fees. Community Development Director's Report, please.
Resolution 1356, this is the proposal for the fees that we had discussed at the last council meeting for the temporary merchant permitting. We've discussed these, obviously extensively, for this, for our temporary merchant ordinance. We were given quite a few suggestions from different groups and from the City Council. After the work session last week, we believed the direction was to set one application fee for temporary merchants that would be valid for one year from the date of application. And so we are proposing a fee of $100 to cover the administrative costs associated with that permit. We have also established a fee for the special event that had, for a special event that has been approved by council prior to issuance of the permit for vendors on municipal-owned property. And that's what we have.
The, would the city clerk please read the resolution by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. A resolution establishing the amount of fees for temporary merchants within the city of Riverton, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded that we open that public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. Hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
I'm Skip Gillen, and I had a couple questions. I saw in the paper here where you've set the dates already for the 18th and 19th for the, for the special permits, for the, for the eclipse. Now, that's what I'm wondering about, because that's a Friday and Saturday. Friday, most people are going to be working Riverton. Now, Saturday and Sunday would be, is a weekend, and Monday is an actual eclipse.
Yeah. No, I don't think that's correct.
Okay. A typo in the paper.
I think, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's correct.
Okay. And let's see, there was one other thing. Oh, here, I have some information for Kyle. We've been doing a little checking, looking for spots. We went down there to the park. This is the skate park, this Fremont, this street. All these streetlights, it's in the park. All have like, full out, they don't have any work.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, basically, that's, oh, when will the permits be going on sale? Do you, can you tell us that now?
There'll be a meeting tomorrow, I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Go right ahead, Sean.
There'll be a meeting tomorrow at 10:00, and we'll start discussing all that stuff. Right here at 10:00 tomorrow morning.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Look forward to seeing you.
You guys have good evening.
That's all right. That's all right.
I can handle that one. I got that one.
You got that one. Thank you.
My good deed for today.
Thank you.
I'm done. I'm sitting back.
Okay. All right. Any other comments during the public hearing process? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I now declare that the public hearing is closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1355. No, it's just a resolution, right?
On the fees.
Oh, okay.
It's just to set the fees.
Okay.
And do we have that? I haven't seen that.
72. Go to 72.
72.
Took me a while to find it, too.
Resolution 1356, fee schedule discussion. Okay, so what we're talking about is, is an application fee of $100 for a duration of one year, and on municipal-owned property, $100 per event. Okay.
I'd move that we approve Resolution Number 1356.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 1356. Any discussion?
Was, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Was there any, on this temporary merchants permit, was there any definite sizing, location, limitation, boundaries?
Not in the resolution, right?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so we can make adjustments as necessary depending on the event?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Item Number 11, the Federal Aviation Administration Agreement Entitlement Fund Transfer. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This agreement centers on the ability of the airport and the city to transfer its allocated entitlement funds to another airport. As you're aware, the Airport Improvement Program allows for grants to be issued to the airport for capital improvement projects. Grants associated with the AIP program are called entitlement funds, and they're qualified by the number of employments that you receive at your airport. We've all heard the figure, 10,000 or greater, we get $1 million worth of entitlement funds. If we're below the 10,000 threshold, then we receive $150,000 worth of entitlement funds. Another qualifier for these entitlement funds is that we participate in what's called the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. In essence, it's a capital plan, and then also a tracker of our assets at the airport. It's a national program, but we comply with that program through the Wyoming Aviation Capital Improvement Program, the WASSIP. As it's written in the FAA Policies Manual and also in the laws established by our Congress, entitlement funds, when entitlement funds, excuse me, exceed the capital needs of an airport, those funds may be transferred to another airport, with an understanding that those funds, those allocated funds, would then be transferred back to the granting entity in a subsequent fiscal year. So even though the city of Riverton has not surpassed the 10,000 threshold in a couple of years, we do have entitlement funds available to lend to another airport, for lack of a better term. And this is because last year, the United States Congress passed an act that allowed airports who did not receive 10,000 or greater employments to receive the $1 million entitlement if their 2012 employments were above 10,000. In brief, pursuant to our capital plan, we do not need to use all of our entitlement funds this upcoming fiscal year. However, Rock Springs Airport is undergoing a major capital improvement project on their FBO building, and therefore, the FAA has asked if we would transfer our allocated funds to Rock Springs Airport. There is no budget impact in doing this, specifically because these are allocated entitlement funds, and we will receive Rock Springs allocated funds in a subsequent fiscal year when we do need them. So at this time, I am asking that the City Council authorize the Public Works Director, myself, to execute this agreement for transfer of entitlement funds with the Federal Aviation Administration. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I make the motion that we allow Mr. Butterfield to step into agreement with the FAA for the transfer of entitlement funds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? So I have a question. Okay, so are we planning to do some apron work and lighting and all that kind of stuff? And after all that's done, we still have some money left over, huh?
Your Honor, that's correct.
I'll be darned. Isn't that amazing? Okay. Too bad we can't slide that into the general fund budget somehow.
Maybe if we start meeting at the airfield.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Item 12, Land/Water Conservation Fund Grant Acceptance. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This grant is really in association with the Splashpad Group and the progress they're making. As you remember, last December, the City Council adopted Resolution 1345, supporting a grant application to the Land/Water Conservation Fund, which is administered by, excuse me, which is administered by the State of Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources. The application was in the amount of $117,940. It is a 50/50 matching grant, and the good news is, the city of Riverton has been awarded that grant. And so this, my report to you is a simple one in that we're requesting your acceptance of this grant, and that you execute the grant with the Land/Water Conservation Fund and the Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources. As far as a budget impact, the Riverton, excuse me, the Splashpad Group for our community projects the cost of the Splashpad improvement to be $255,879. And they have fundraised the appropriate amount of money to match this grant. This grant, as it is federal dollars, will not be made available until the federal fiscal year, which is October 1st. So come October 1, we can work with the Splashpad Group and begin an advertisement for this project and move forward with its construction, probably in the spring of 18.
Wow. Isn't that, isn't that amazing? And the water conservation thing, maybe they, do they have a recirculating tank?
I'd want to send my kids there if they're right.
Uh huh. Oh, wow. Okay. That's pretty good. So the Chair would entertain a motion. I guess we're going to accept that grant, huh?
Motion to accept the grant application from LWCF.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the grant. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. We did that, okay? If you need my signature, I'd be glad to supply it.
Great.
Okay. The next item is Riverton Water Supply Project Agreement. Amendment Number Four. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you. As you are aware, the city of Riverton entered into agreement with the Wyoming Water Development Commission, clear back in 2009, when it began its Riverton Water Supply Project. That project centered on the construction of transmission lines, booster stations, well connections, and the storage tank that's located on Airport Hill. Due to the large scope of this project, it was broken into three separate phases. Phase one and two have been completed, and as you are aware, we are waiting on the completion of Phase Three. This amendment coming before you simply allows the timeframe to be extended with our agreement that we have currently with the Wyoming Water Development Commission. This is the Fourth Amendment that we have had to our original agreement from 2009. Amendment Number One was executed in 2010, and essentially secured more funding for the project and increased the project's scope. Amendment Two was executed in 2014 and extended the reversion deadline of the agreement, meaning the time allowed to complete the project, and request for grant drawdowns. Amendment Three was executed in 2015. This amendment secured more funding for the project and then also further extended that reversion deadline. Amendment Four, again, is another extension of that reversion deadline. The deadline set by Amendment Number Three put the reversion date at July 1st, 2017. This new one extends that to July 1st, 2020. This gives us, again, more time to complete the project and close it out. There is no budget impact with extending this deadline and approving Amendment Number Four, and staff recommends that council approve Amendment Number Four to our project agreement with the Wyoming Water Development Commission. Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve Amendment Number Four to the Riverton Water Supply Project Agreement from the Wyoming Water Development Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Public hearing and consideration of Resolution 1355, Community Development Fee Increase. Could we get the Community Development Director's Report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The city of Riverton does review rates and fees annually. As you know, the utility fees were adjusted recently. The, this Community Development Department does evaluate our current fees, and we evaluate to see if there's any changes that need to be made, and then we meet with the Construction Board of Appeals for their approval. These, these rates include all of our building permit fees, and it also includes our zoning change fees, variance applications, home occupation, childcare permits, and the other fees for plat review. So all those fees are within the Community Development Department. And we met with the Construction Board of Appeals in May, and there was a recommendation that we had made to raise the fees, the 3.7%, which is a cumulative three-year CPI rate. The fees for the...
4, and staff recommends that council approve Amendment Number 4 to our project agreement with the Wyoming Water Development Commission. Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Amendment Number 4 to the Riverton Water Supply Project Agreement from the Wyoming Water Development Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Public hearing and consideration of Resolution 1355, Community Development Fee Increase. Could we get the Community Development Directors' Report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The city of Riverton does review rates and fees annually. As you know, the utility fees were adjusted recently. This Community Development Department does evaluate our current fees, and we evaluate to see if there's any changes that need to be made, and then we meet with the Construction Board of Appeals for their approval. These, these rates include all of our building permit fees, and it also includes our zoning change fees, variance applications, home occupation, childcare permits, and the other fees for plat review. So all those fees are within the Community Development Department, and we met with the Construction Board of Appeals in May, and there was a recommendation that we had made to raise the fees, the 3.7%, which is a cumulative three-year CPI rate. The fees for the, for the building permits and the other items have not been raised since 2014, so they felt that it was appropriate to raise these fees.
Thank you. A resolution, we'll see. So would the city clerk please read the resolution by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. A resolution establishing the amount of fees for certain services and building permits within the city of Riverton, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
Your Honor, considering there's no one in the audience, I would move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1356.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 1355.
Fifty-five? I think that's right. I think you're right. Okay?
Second.
Just wanted to make sure you weren't looking for a different motion there.
Yeah, that's, that's right. That's, we started out that way, and then got over here and got to 56 as the next item, I guess, so, okay? So, Tim said moved, and Holly said second? Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Council Committee reports and Councilmember roundtables, Ms. Gibbon.
All I have is that we have the senior endowment meeting tomorrow at the Senior Center at 10 o'clock. And that's it.
Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have the Eclipse Working Group will meet here at City Hall tomorrow at 10 o'clock, and then also had an opportunity this week to do an opening ceremony for the Little League. Or it was last week, I guess, Thursday of last week, but we got to see, the mayor's lost a little bit on his fastball. Still is, it still is there. Huge shout out to Officer Cody Myers for coming out and doing that. I know there was a lot going on, and for them to find time in their busy schedule shows the support that they have for the youth of the community, so I'm grateful for that. And it was a great opportunity, just to pay a little bit of respect for Lee and the dedication and time that he spent to the Riverton Little League and the baseball community. We had kids from every baseball league in the city of Riverton, and a couple people from outside of Riverton showed up to to support him, so it was really neat to see the support for Lee, and Pam was there, and it was just, it was a good heartfelt moment for about 20 minutes, and we played some good baseball.
You bet.
So I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
I attended the Waste Management Meeting on Monday in Lander. Report that they have roughly about $12 million set aside for putting the Shoshone, Dubois, Hudson landfills into the grave, and they felt so good that they wanted to give their employees a 5% raise, which was tabled. The current representative from the county felt that it was a little premature, and that's all I have to report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Trancock?
I just, Officer Tattawald has left, but I've had the opportunity to get to know him a little bit when he was working for the sheriff's office, and I'm just really glad we have him. I think he'll be a very good addition to the police department, and I just wanted to say I've been very impressed. I think that the police department in general has been doing good work, and I've been hearing good things about him, and honestly saying good things about him, too, so, thank you.
Good. Thank you, thank you. Yes, I did throw out the ball again for Little League, and this time, I almost got it to the plate. So, I.
You got it to the plate on a bounce.
I, I did. I, I almost got it, I almost got it to the plate.
Catcher kept it in front of him, that's what's important.
Okay, two years ago, two years ago, when I threw out the first ball, I think it got to the plate on the second bounce. And so, I am, I am getting my range a little bit better. It's, it's, it's further than I usually throw, I guess, is what the, is what the story is. I just want to make sure that, at Little League, that there isn't anybody there that can't do a better job.
Mission accomplished, Your Honor.
Okay.
Are you training up for next year, see if you can?
Oh, I don't know. Lance's, Lance's wife said after that, she says, "You need to come see me. I've got some tricks. I could, I could fix that arm so that it would work again." And I, I did. About 15 years ago, I fell down and dislocated my shoulder, and didn't recognize it for what it was for months. I just, you know, there was, I just simply couldn't throw anything overhand, but because I don't throw things overhand very often, it just didn't seem to matter. So, it, you know, for a couple weeks, it was sore as a dickens, and then I gradually got to where I tolerated it, and, you know, it wasn't too bad. And so, one day, I was complaining about it, and a good friend of mine said, "Well, gee, let me look at that," and he just moved my arm, and it went pop. And so, there it is. I was dislocated for about six months, but I have not, I have not really worked on that, you know, to, to get, get that back functional, and so, when it comes to throwing a baseball, you can bet that everybody else will be better than I am. But I was honored to throw out that ball for the game, and to remember Lee, and, and you guys all did a great job on, on commemorating his efforts to Little League, and he did, he did a lot of service for the, for the city of Riverton, and I appreciate it, and we will miss him, no doubt. I had a meeting with the Solid Waste District, as a matter of fact, and I thought I'd maybe pass that on. They're looking forward to a hazardous waste collection day in Fremont County. We did that for quite a few years, and, and people have missed that, and so, they would like to do that again, and so, the Solid Waste District is willing to sponsor that, but they're hoping to get partners involved in that, and so, I think we've put a couple thousand dollars into our budget to handle hazardous, our share of the hazardous waste collection disposal, and we're getting money from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, we're getting money from, we hope, Lander Conservation Districts, all three Conservation Districts are there. I think we'll probably have enough money in the pot to, they're estimating it's going to cost between $10,000 and $15,000 to dispose of that hazardous waste material. Way back, 15 years ago, or maybe even 20, when we first started that program, there was a lot of farm chemicals out there that came in, and so that was fairly expensive. But I, I just think all that stuff's been picked up, so, about the only thing that we wind up with nowadays is some stuff left over in the garage. I'm done talking for the night. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Oh, City Administrator, do we have any comments from you?
Certainly.
Certainly.
Your Honor, the only thing I have to report is to remind the council of the preliminary budget review on the 30th. We are still crunching numbers, believe it or not, as of today. We were still making additions in the revenues, which is a good thing, and we were still decreasing some expenditures. So we are still trying to get to a good place and offer you a good product for your review on the 30th.
Okay.
What, what time is that going to be?
Seven, seven o'clock.
It'll be during the council meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, got it. Yeah, Tuesday.
No surprises?
Absolutely none, Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you.
All right.
Second.
Second.
Does this mostly still count?
Okay, moved and seconded to adjourn. So that was Tim said yes, right?
That was Sean.
And then Sean said second. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?